The presenters on Zoom.
Hi, Bridget.
Hi, Bridget.
Bridget and Dani are going to present on Child Care Coalition and just childcare efforts here in Clackamas County. So, um, we will, are we ready, everyone?
Yeah.
Now, we'll turn it over to you.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for letting us join you tonight to talk about the coalition. And also, good to see you all. It's been, it's just been a couple of months since I was, uh, before you talking about Clackamas Workforce Partnership. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And while I do that, I'll have Dani introduce herself.
Hi there, Dani Sam Thomas. My pronouns are she and her. I am the Director of the Early Learning Hub in Clackamas County and one of the Chairs of the C5 Coalition. So with Bridget and Brett Walker from Clackamas PSD. Looks like we need permission to share screen.
In the meeting.
Oh, there we go. Perfect. Thank you so much. Can I go back? Sorry. Uh, and I am Bridget Daisy again. Uh, she heard there. I'm the Executive Director of Clackamas Workforce Partnership. And, uh, we want to talk to you about the coalition. It's, we've been around for a few years. Um, so you may have heard some of our work and seen maybe some of our reports. Um, and we're really excited to talk to you more about the importance of childcare in our community and the need for more people to get involved in helping find solutions. Turn over to Dani.
Absolutely. So as Bridget said, the coalition's been in existence for a few years. And we also did some pre-work together in looking at the childcare crisis of Clackamas County and really drilling down to what does that look like? And the reality for us is that less than 15% of children under two in Clackamas County have access to a licensed childcare slot. This means that many adults in their prime working years have not been able to return to work. Um, it contributes to workforce shortages, prevents the economy from fully recovering from the pandemic. And the pandemic really put a spotlight onto childcare in the high, high need that families have in order to work and learn and thrive, in order for kids to learn and thrive. Childcare has to be stable, it has to be available to families. So in our vision, all families in Clackamas County that have that need have access to a quality, affordable childcare that really meets their unique needs, their days, their hours, when they need to be at work, um, when they need to be at school, all of those things, including nights and weekends.
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
Your statistic about fifteen percent, less than 15%, is that the same whether the family has capacity to pay for care or they need subsidized care?
Yeah, that's a straight number of children under two in Clackamas County versus how many slots are available for children. So that doesn't at all consider how many of those in that 15% are able to pay for a slot, even if they do have access.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
And childcare matters for all sorts of reasons. And I know I'm talking to lots of people who care about little ones, uh, maybe have little ones of their own. Uh, childcare matters to the children that we're taking care of and the quality care and, and the idea that every child deserves to feel safe and supported in their development. Um, it matters to the parents and the families. It matters to the employers that hire those parents and families. And it matters to the community. If I, all of us are impacted at the lack of childcare when we go to a restaurant and they don't have enough service staff to be able to help support um, a, a busy Saturday night. When we try to make an appointment at a doctor's office and they are, they have a waitlist for months. Those are all impacts of childcare, not exclusively, but certainly childcare is, is, is having an impact on our economy and our community.
This drills down here on this slide to some more of those numbers, which will be helpful for you data fans. Um, there are a little over 420,000 residents in Clackamas County. This data is from 2021 in terms of residency. And that, there are almost 65,000 children between the ages of six weeks to 12 years of age. And they live at over 108,000 households in the county here. So by and large, you'll see that pie graph there. The families in Clackamas County have childcare aged children, the majority of them. And there are so many children who need this care, just by sheer numbers. Many more children than what we have access for care for.
And because we're thinking about the whole problem that is childcare, and I'll just also add a note um, that though this coalition is focused on childcare, when we talk about whole family solutions and holistic support in our community, we need childcare, we need adult care. Um, our care industry needs support. And what we have are a lot of leaders and community members that recognize that they, that there are issues that they can help support and advocate and champion for. Um, and so we've, as we've done this over the last few years, uh, we've engaged our education partners at the K-12 and higher education level, elected leaders like, uh, like your mayor and all the way up through, uh, state legislators um, and county commissioners and other cities officials. Um, certainly nonprofits and faith-based organizations, our business community. It has recognized, many businesses have recognized the importance of childcare on their business. Um, and we're still also trying to help educate them on retention and recruitment efforts and how childcare plays a part in their ability to keep and maintain staff. Um, certainly childcare providers, they are, uh, the backbone of this industry. Um, it's, it's because of childcare providers that our economy is actually able to run. Um, so working parents can take time away from their little ones, so, and children, so that they can go to work and learn. Um, and then all of our community again is impacted. So we have community members who recognize that this is an area of need and want to participate in solution finding.
In our coalition currently, we have three different workgroups. We're working on different strategies. You see those workforce engagement and advocacy workgroups listed here. The workforce workgroup currently is doing some ad hoc work around supporting lifting of wages and compensation for early childhood educators, but also looking at training and entry programs such as apprenticeship and what the possibilities of that are for our early childhood education sector and related workforce stability measures. We really recognize that without a stable, highly qualified workforce, access to more childcare is not going to be possible. With the amount of turnover that exists in the early childhood education field, which is about 25% a year, we will never be able to grow a childcare system that supports all children without having a really robust, really well compensated and highly educated workforce. Part of our goals also in the engagement advocacy group at this moment are kind of doing a tandem uh, work group blending together. And they are really working on policy options for what does it look like from a policy level? If we have robust childcare systems that really fund early childhood educators to be in the field, to continue getting quality training, to stay in this field? And what does it look like for state funding and our public funding, our federal funding, all coming together toward those sort of goals?
And we know investing in childcare pays off. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't share, um, my, uh, my opinion that when we talk about ROI, in the same breath that we're talking about children, we are missing something. There is, uh, there is, uh, an opportunity for our community to talk and think and feel differently for our children, because frankly, our future depends on it. And, and we also know that there is a positive bottom line to investing in children. We reduce, uh, we can reduce adverse childhood experiences with safe, quality childcare. When parents feel supported, that they can go to work and they know that their child is going to be in a loving and caring environment, they can put their all into their workplace and then come back and take care of their children, um, in their off hours. Um, when parents don't have that, we all pay for it. We pay for that in form of, um, recruitment and retention challenges with industry shortages and with all of these waitlists and backlogs that we have from building, construction and contractors all in the trades, all the way through our healthcare, uh, and education systems. Every dollar spent in childcare is paid, it can be paid off um, in terms of, uh, reducing spending on, uh, uh, reacting to a problem as opposed to solving or preventing a problem from happening. And because we've seen it work in other countries, we know that for every dollar that's spent on childcare, there is no less than $6 of, uh, return that we'll see in the community. And we've seen reports as high as 12. But again, I'll say, when we're talking about ROI and children in the same breath, we should be talking about how do we give them the best care that they can, that they deserve.
And when we talk about really solving the childcare crisis, it isn't just money. Of course, that is very necessary. But really, at the root of this problem is that we as a society do not have a solid understanding and recognition of the role that childcare really plays in all of our people development, as Bridget likes to call it. So truthfully, across the country, what we know is that really only a fraction of families who need childcare in the United States receive it. Part of that is because it's unaffordable. Childcare is very expensive to provide. High quality is even more expensive. It is hard to find. So if you can find it and you can afford it, those things don't always match up. Right? Particularly for our low or middle income families right now in the state of Oregon, the only subsidy option we have that pays for childcare across the childcare age ranges is on a waitlist. Thousands of families are waiting. And it is unlikely that anytime soon, without further investment from the state legislature, that any of those families will receive the opportunity to receive a subsidy to go to childcare. That has still resulted, and there are actually some programs who are having trouble enrolling children. We have open slots and children can't be in them because families can't afford to be in them without access to a subsidy option. This has got pervasive short-term and long-term impacts. You'll see the impacts everywhere. Less families able to work, less families able to go to school or training programs. Also, children who are not receiving instructions, who are arriving at kindergarten, not ready to learn in a group environment, who are struggling socially and emotionally, who are having behaviors because they're not used to being in group settings. They're not used to being away from their parents. They haven't had the peer-to-peer connections and the developmental check-ins that they need to. So they haven't had the screenings that they should have, which means they haven't had the access to pediatricians or maybe gotten some of their developmental concerns addressed. And when that happens, we pay for it more later. It's harder to fix later. And so the sooner that we can really address these things for children, the less impacts, the less cost to the child and to us as a society.
And to Dani's point, we are absolutely paying for this. We're paying for this through, um, reduced workforce participation rates. We're paying for it when people leave the workforce altogether because they have children they have to take care of. We're paying for it in terms of people in our community that are making life choices about their family and choosing not to have children because of lack of childcare. Um, and we have an aging population and we don't have enough people um, to replace all of the roles that we have in our community and the great need. So even if we had a match for match with all of the talent, we still come up short with where the demand that we're seeing, uh, with an aging population. And so, uh, we're paying for it in all sorts of ways, um, in the, in the tune of billions of dollars. And we see that businesses, especially our small and medium-sized businesses and our nonprofits, are struggling. Um, and being connected to the workforce system, we regularly hear from the business community how challenging it is. And I recognize too, that even in government and municipalities, um, that there is a challenge with finding the workforce. All of us are feeling it as employers.
And here are some of the solutions. Um, and a lot of this, we're not making up. This is not, you know, new. These are all things that we know are part of the solution. Of course, the first thing, like we said, the workforce is the most important. Without that, we don't have childcare. And making childcare available to all means we need varied hour care. We need services straight across this whole county, which is a very diverse geographic region with diverse language needs, different hour needs. And then those solutions must be affordable or families won't be able to access them. That means solutions like figuring out what we can do with statewide subsidy, figuring out how we develop scaled to income affordability programming to so that parents don't pay more than they can afford for tuition in order to have access for their child.
We think of childcare like infrastructure. The way that we all pay as drivers and users of the trans and tra, of transportation and roadways, uh, the way that we all have to share the costs of rebuilding a bridge and repairing roads, we should all be sharing the costs of childcare, because again, we all benefit from it. Uh, we, the policy paper that the advocacy workgroup has been working on, um, is in draft form. If you would love, if you'd like to take a look at it, we would love to get your eyes on it because it really talks about what is the cost, what is it going to take for us as a state uh, built on work that we did locally here in Clackamas County? What is it going to cost for us to move forward in a system that is sustainable? Where we start to see those benefits pay off for community members and families? So our goal is to create, uh, more opportunities for conversation and learning and champion the change, because it's going to take all of us singing from that songbook uh, with our legislators, with the powers that be, because we need these changes at a state and at a federal level. Because we recognize the city of Milwaukee is not going to be able to solve this problem on your own. And so our call to action will require all of us to support, uh, this positive or the, uh, a positive change that we can talk more about in the white paper.
And we would love for any of you, all of you who are interested or want to know more or just stay engaged with us, to please do so. We have a website. I put the link in the chat. That link actually goes directly to our updates page, which has our blog posts on it. You will find there, uh, from about a month ago or so, a blog post from your very own mayor who is graciously, um, lending expertise and vision and thoughts and being a partner with us in this work. Um, we have a Facebook page where we encourage you to like or follow. We want you to share those with other people, connect us with other places who might be interested in this presentation that we gave you this evening. Help us advocate in any way you can, using any platform or power that you do have to get the word out about how necessary it is for us to solve this childcare for our region, how necessary it is for our children and our families to have that access. And if you ever have questions, we would love for you to reach out.
And with that, uh, we're done presenting, but we would love to hear any questions or thoughts that any of you have.
Both have questions? Um, well, I'll just start with, um, I did circulate an earlier draft of the paper. Probably the first draft that came in maybe six weeks ago or something. I know it's been, uh, having revisions, um. So if you want to send us the latest draft, I'm sure others would like to take a look at that. It is dense, I will say that to everybody. It's not light reading. Uh, it's dense, but it's, I find it very persuasive. You know, a lot of work has gone into it. What is the plan in terms of getting it to the legislature?
Uh, that's a great question. Once we have more eyes on it, review it, because it's going to be in draft form until we feel confident that it's making the strongest argument that it possibly can with legislators. Um, and then we have a few legislators who are heavily engaged in childcare locally. Uh, Representative Hartman and Representative Neuron are both, uh, part and connected to the coalition uh, and are big advocates of change in childcare systems. Now, um, I believe they'll be, I, I, I'm not saying that they would take the policy package and necessarily like put it through, but I think there, there are good places to say like, where is this conversation, could, where could this conversation lead us? Um, the other ideas that we have are connecting with the Department of Early Learning and Care, um, as well as other leaders and legislators about making substantive, uh, really, um, powerful change, um, more quickly as opposed to iterative change and hoping that this problem will solve itself in the next 10 years. And if we have to wait 10 years, it will be too late for us to solve this problem.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I'm just, just out of, uh, out of curiosity, what do you, what's been your experience? What's been the biggest barrier at the elected level? Preventing them, it seems like this issue has, it's not new. Uh, I'm, I'm a father of a two-year-old, a two-week-old. Uh, and I actually was, we, we had our academy there not too long ago. Uh, so we took a, a look at Clackamas, what you guys do, it's incredible, amazing. We need to get that out more. But what do you think has been the biggest barrier at the elected level? What's, what's been the hesitation, if you could bring up something or multiple things?
Dani, I'll go ahead and start this and you go ahead and jump in. Um, I think there is a lot of, I, I'd say fear. Uh, either fear of change, fear of failure, fear it's not the right answer, fear, um, it's going to be too big, fear it's going to push people away. Uh, I think the biggest barrier is, um, just a, 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 a lack of a changed mindset about how it can look different. And I, I, I can't tell you how many times I've heard from people, it's not going to change. That's too big of an ask. That's too scary. No one's going to be able to touch that. And we can't say enough times, if it's not that, it's not good enough. And again, our children deserve much better. I don't know what any of us that would give our child 70% of what they need, when we know they need more.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I, I, I'm in that boat, one of those parents. My wife had a labor job to stay home and take care of the kids, to have a support system in place. And it's been difficult, you know, I, I have a decent paid job, my day job, but we're still paycheck to paycheck, sometimes they even overdrop at the end of the month, because how difficult it is. And we pay for childcare, it's about the most affordable we can. You know, uh, somebody's running it out of their home, so it's, that's what we have available to us. Um, and it's not easy. And right now I want to leave. And our biggest fear I know happens when I go back to work. You know, my wife is with me, you know, one told the child, a two-year-old. We have to now reduce, she was at work part-time, now we have to reduce the childcare because she's now out of work. So it takes our son out of that, results in those, those issues. So, um, I'm right there with you. So anything that I can do, I'm sure the council feels the same way. Anything that, that we can do to advocate or be a part of that solution or a task force, we can be a part of something that, that move this forward a little bit quicker and get more eyes on it. It's been, it's been too long.
Uh, I've got a question, uh, for either one of you. I mean, who do you, what government entity, you know, do you think um, the issue primarily resides in? I mean, is it local? Is it county? Is it state? Is it federal? Uh, I, the answer may be all, but I, I, I think it, there's probably, probably there's a concentration of gravity somewhere. Where is it?
Well, I, it's definitely all. I think at any level, you'll find some challenges, particularly in Clackamas County. This is not something that our local county government is necessarily behind. Um, this is not a priority for them. It's not that they don't think that it's important. It's not a priority. And when it's not a priority, that means dollars go elsewhere to other things. And also, the state is the largest purchaser of childcare in the state. And so the Department of Early Learning and Care is the state agency responsible for subsidies for childcare for families. They're responsible for Head Start, early Head Start, preschool promise programming, which supplement the childcare supply in the entire state. And so they don't have the answers. They only have a $6 million budget. And so it's, they would have to be empowered from the governor or the rest of the legislature to make bigger investments and big change, which is, as far as we've heard, not on the table this session. Bridget, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say all levels of government are responsible for helping with the solutions, because everyone carries a piece of the policy that can support, for example, a city's business codes and ordinances can help support childcare, can help make childcare businesses harder to thrive or to be set up. Um, and even like waiving fees, um, can be a big, can be a big, make a big difference in the, in the lives of a childcare provider and a small business owner. Um, and I would say it goes all the way up, because ultimately, we're going to need federal investment. The, 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 again, if we're all going to share the cost, um, having something exclusive in Oregon, if our neighbors to the, uh, the east of us don't have access to it, that doesn't feel good. That's not, that's not equitable. Um, so we do know that there's going to need to be a national shift. But in the meantime, the more we can lean on our state to have bold leadership and to have a vision that solves for this issue, um, I think that would go a long way. Um, and if, if, and if we get a chorus of, uh, of electeds from the city level, I think that could go a long way to sway maybe our county representatives, um, or legislators. And then, and then again, having more people that can lean, um, in the direction of the governor and other executive branch.
So one quick follow-up, is, is the Fed's support limited to, to, to tax credits? Or is there a direct funding of any sort?
So that they do largely fund the subsidy, uh, that families have access to in the state of Oregon. It is directed to the state agency responsible for that, which is the Department of Early Learning and Care, which they then blend that federal money with state money in order to fund the subsidy. They also directly fund many Head Start spots throughout each state.
Thank you.
I would, I would also just say, um, a, a, a response to, um, the count, the previous counselor's question and then also partially, partially yours is, uh, that we need the business community's voice um, increased in this advocacy and in this championing. Um, Milwaukee has many businesses, um, in its, in its, um, city limits and even on the other side, that if we were to pull a conversation of businesses together and we could talk about all sorts of, but childcare must be one of them. Um, that would be something that we could partner with, um, and start planning for. So I think that there's ways to, um, connect the dots, but we need the business voice to help make, um, it louder, uh, with our electeds.
Well, I was going to ask you about that, because I think I told you when you were here before, Bridget, that, um, one of our bigger businesses on the International Way said, oh, his problem filling slots was about, uh, transportation and the buses didn't come early enough or often enough. It wasn't about childcare. And you sort of suggested he may not realize how much it's about childcare. Um, so yeah, how do we get that conversation going? How do we, because we have, um, you know, we could, we've talked, I've talked with the planners a little bit about some short, some things we could ease, be an easy code fix to make childcare allowable outright in the industrial areas. Um, I don't know if anybody's trying to put, I don't know if we have any private providers trying to put childcare in those areas. Um, but, um, we could, there are things we can do with our code to make it easier for sure. Um, but yeah, how do we, how do we have those conversations with those business districts?
I believe it's an ongoing, it's, it's going to be an ongoing conversation. Some people will have to leave their roles in order for that, that type of growth mindset to change for somebody new to come into leadership. Um, and so, and we know there are those kinds of transitions all the time. If somebody doesn't believe childcare is the root of the cause of recruitment and retention issues, I don't, I, I think we can keep trying to change their mind and there's a possibility we might not be able to change their mind, but we can influence and connect with everybody else around them so they can't say no. It really only take, to have a ground swell or a revolution, it could take three to 30% of the population. And I think that if we could get Milwaukee and Gladstone and Malala and Canby and Oregon City and all of our communities across Clackamas County to say child, children matter and their families matter in our community. And because of that, we have to have smart solutions as soon as possible. Um, I think that, I think people would, I would speak up, say what their challenges and concerns are. And I can tell you, for every challenge and concern, it's already been shared. We know what the rebuttal is. We know how to, we know how the, what the adverse reaction of we don't do anything, because that's the other concern. If we don't do something to solve this problem, what does, what is our, what is the future of our community look like? Uh, and I think that that's, that should be compelling enough.
I think there's a way to have that conversation of like, okay, that's, transportation is number one. That's a very real problem. What's number two? And is it in any way related to, you also have to take your children somewhere before you can come to work or catch the bus? So you can't catch an early enough bus?
So we're kind of coming to the end of our time, but I think Counselor Anderson, do you have a question?
Um, if we're coming up on time, you can play your own sentence, you know, if you want.
Oh, okay, I mean.
Okay, okay. I'll go quick. Um, building off Council President asking this question about kind of who's responsible or what does this look like? Danny, more specifically to you and to the early learning hubs. I know that we have hubs that are doing all sorts of different work in the state. The South Coast is doing very different work than the Frontier Hub, which is Clackamas County. Um, in a world in which hubs are better funded as a system, do you think that there's more of a standardized role for hubs across the whole state? Do you think that there's certain things that hubs should take on? Uh, are there certain KPIs that maybe John Kitzauer didn't envision when he was creating the hubs that you think that you should take on?
I think that it's an excellent question. I really believe that every hub would be more involved in this space if every hub had the capacity that they needed to do so. For me, being the director of the early learning hub, I come from preschool and childcare. This is a priority for my governance council and for what we have decided to do with our dollars in Clackamas County. Um, other regions maybe don't have a director who has that experience, but all of them wish that they could be more involved. Since we've started our coalition, several other hubs have also started coalitions and started to have conversations about what this could look like. And some are not there yet because they don't have the expertise, they don't have the resources. I do think that certainly there's more space for that, but it will still look different region by region of what actually needs to happen for that region. Us being a metro county, we have a lot further to go. We have a higher population than a lot of the regions and we just have the one hub. And I only have three staff. And so we, we do what we can, um, in that respect. Multnomah County has more than four times that. And so their ability to really take on childcare looks more like neighborhood sort of a level where they could maybe do something southeast, northeast, right? It is harder to bring people all together around a table in Multnomah County because it is so broad and so different that their solutions are going to have to be very different than our solutions. And that's part of the beauty of early learning hubs being involved is being able to be the connector. There are a lot of other folks also working on childcare and we're really lucky in Clackamas County that they're all willing to like come in through the hub and be connected with the other partners that we're working with. Um, and that is, that's what's magical about early learning hubs really is being able to be that connector of many things, but there are childcare resource and referrals throughout the state as well who are responsible for the professional development and the quality improvement of childcare programs that are licensed. There are licensing programs throughout the state that we have to work with as well. So there's a lot of people to bring to the table. Um, hubs are not funded to do that.
Well, you're doing some amazing work, even with all the jobs you have. So a huge thank you to your whole coalition.
Well, and on the coalition, um, Counselor Costerbody is going to be our, um, rep to the coalition. I'm going to still kind of be his alternate or backup when he can't do it, but, um, I think he's going to start attending the meetings. And, um, yeah, do keep us informed when there's a, there's a juncture where you need voices, whether it's in Salem or at the county. Um, yeah, I think we're all probably interested in being, in helping moving this conversation forward. If no other questions, I can call it off back and. Okay.
Just real quick, I'm not part of the group, but I just have a question. If you can live a magic wand and fix one small thing that could be beneficial to making this whole thing better, what would that be?
Wages. We, we really need providers able to be paid a living wage, which we know for Clackamas County trends towards about $38 an hour, and that's about almost double what most of them are being paid right now.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you both so much. Um, we will go along with the, the next part of our meeting, but we really appreciate you joining us.
Appreciate that.
All right. And it's kind of the bookends of a child, right? So we start with the, the.
Is your fine? You gonna want me?
You're fine, you're fine. Are you going to come here if you want to feel more in the middle of things? Yeah, I don't know. Oh, you got slides too? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know that you also that it can be formal, informal.
So those who don't know that, I guess he will introduce himself.
I will. Um, my name is Zach Hatchell, uh, he him pronouns. I'm the program manager at Clackamas Drop, which is a youth center in this downtown area. Uh, we're right by Axel Tree and Duffy's. Uh, but really primarily located for the high school, uh, Milwaukee Kennedy Arts and Milwaukee High School. Uh, if you guys want to say, I got some stuff here. You can have some, but you don't have to. We have a lot of stuff too. Uh, I got some stickers for those of you who are really into it. We have a pool of these cards because we work with a lot of youth all over the place, so who could be houseless? And if they are out in the weather and the carpet's wet, then like who do they call? But these are almost indestructible, but I have seen them fade pretty hard. Um, thanks for having me. I've met many of you across the city or county events or city events. Um, and I definitely encourage you to stop by our drop-in center at some point soon. Um, I am part of the historic Milwaukee Youth Association, so I know I've met Will here in his room, uh, previously, uh, Mr. Massey, I met you at the volunteers picnic a couple of years back. Uh, Mary Beatty, I remember you came into the drop-in center and, um, I've seen you helping out with like the bug outs down the road. And I've asked, I think, Emma to slide them by a pole, but unfortunately you didn't have permission to let me do that at a building.
Like memory, memory. And see, I'm saying.
Well, I'm a nice man, real quick, uh, I know we're like suing everything, but, uh, Travis Henry from Henry Point said that his kid got to slide down the pole. So I was like, ah.
Like he was liable when that happened. He didn't want.
So, uh, who is you there? We are a young adult and peer organization devoted to improving services and systems that support positive growth and development for our united voices of youth who have lived experience. Um, lived experience is basically the things that make us up of who we are. That's being, uh, youth of color or houseless or LGBTQ or whatever our like thing that has made our, our mess, trying to help share that message and help youth navigate, um, things going on in their life. So our big thing is peer support, uh, all of our staff. And I think I'll get to that. It's my first time presenting, so I have some nerves going on about this, but, uh,
Pretty cool, thank you.
Cool, thank you. Um, our big thing is peer support. And so what that looks like is it's, uh, most of our staff are like 21, 24, around the age of the youth that we work with. So, uh, they're there to help just be a, a, one of the common facts for those youth to have some reach look up to. And not to tell them what to do, but help ask the questions to pull out the answers that they need and they're reporting them. Uh, we have drop-in centers across the state. We have a wraparound program which really helps youth, uh, who have numerous things going on in their world to help them navigate and be the, and navigate for them. And then we also have support groups that we do, uh, locally and then across the state. Um, we'll go through all of it. That is our space, uh, in order of Washington, the 21st. Uh, if you, if anybody hasn't been there, I want them to check it out. I encourage you, come stop room before three o'clock because that's when you have to come in the building. Uh, and I don't have pictures of the inside really, but we'll get there. So we do have drop-in centers across the state, Clackamas, Salem, or I should say Milwaukee. Uh, but we help cover Clackamas counties, we're funding through them, Salem, Eugene, Coos Bay and Medford. Uh, we also have a second satellite group up in Columbia County, I mean, that's more of a rural, uh, county. They bounce around from place to place and kind of like help drop activities off with youth to do those that have park meetups. Uh, but we are, our program is out of Eugene and what's really cool is that I don't know if you guys know, but Ali Linfoot used to work with the county and she came down to Eugene in 2011 and was like, we will fund a drop-in center and staff it for you guys. So we can get people, youth kind of off the street and into a spot where there's just people around. Uh, and Martin at that time was our CEO, was down, he would go to a park and with like a jug of water with some cucumber and some like, I think he said lemons. And he would put up the post, it was like free water. And in that time he would like, you know, check in and be like, hey, how's things going? Um, because our organization started back in 2000, like, or in 1998, it started back then in Springfield at Thurston High School where after the shootings down there. And they realized that they needed more things for youth. If they're having problems, they'll, you know, they'll talk those things through. So it started there, but we were the first, first youth center outside of that Eugene area. And even then they had like, they were, I don't know if they had an actual like facility or a, a drop-in center, but we were the first one. And I will say, Martin talks about, uh, Martin Rafferty, he's our CEO. He said that the state of Kentucky came up here in 2015 and went, took the Clackamas Drop model and went back to Kentucky and built 16 drop-in centers down there. So kind of cool that we have a reflection down there. Uh, this is our staff team, uh, myself, you can see me. Uh, and then this is Saji. He used to be a youth at our drop-in center. This is kind of back when I met him and I was like, we need to hire him. Uh, he was working at the preschool just up the street, but he would come through very regularly. And eventually we got him on board as a staff. And then we also have Mason up here. Uh, who was our, in our recovery program. And then Lindsay, our newest addition, who has been just a bundle of energy and life and innovation and creativity, uh, total amazing team. Uh, but that's, that's us. We just added somebody on Friday. They agreed to come on board with us. And so we're really excited. We don't have them until 23rd of September. Um, but our program is for youth 14 to 25, uh, which creates a safe, welcoming, inclusive space for you to receive your support, gain leadership skills, meet new people, set goals, implement steps to achieve them. Uh, with COVID happened, I was with the organization, then I've been with them since last April, so I'm still kind of new to this, but we went from having a busy center to then having to do like check-ins online virtually with youth. And it really fell off at that point. But, um, we've been seeing them, youth come back a lot more and we've been doing this thing called intentional, intentional connection time, every Tuesday. So we have a day where when youth first come in the building, we had like nine rooms all together and it doesn't look like that from the outside, but we keep them all in the same room, kind of like this, and we'll have some activity or a game or icebreakers to kind of like just check in and like meet people. Because I think people come in all the time, it's like a space that they want to be with their friends or just like after school. And they'll just like be in their glitz, but we're just going to find ways to have you just meet each other more and just be engaged and grow that community. It's been a big thing for them. And I will say 14 to 25, uh, we, Martin was in the foster care system when he came to Oregon. And so a big thing for him and the organization has been not just cutting youth off when they're 18, but trying to help provide support after that because we have youth in high school who are just over here who they get out and looking for a job, like, what am I going to do? I need a house, I need this. So I think things been like, uh, resource navigation, which we'll jump into. Um, we also have tried to work with you to find life sciences. So things like graduating high school, getting into college, finding, you know, finding a job, adulting, um, all the things that we kind of are, that we're doing right now, that you guys are doing, we're just trying to help them get there. Uh, drop-in center services, so I guess before, our big thing is peer support, but we also do system navigation. Uh, so if a youth is in need of certain resources or they come in and they're like, I need a house, a place to stay tonight, we help them out. Uh, we've been working really hard with growing our network in the county and, but even further out, because we do have youth that come from Multnomah County. There are youth that come from, uh, Beaver Center. We have youth that come up from Gladstone and Portland.
It's just word of mouth.
Yeah, that's a big thing for us. But also with the high school, they're kind of open to like many students coming in from all over the place. Uh, so a lot of those youth come over to our center to just get some support. And we are starting up a new, uh, it's not a youth advisory council, but we're trying to basically really listen to the youth voice, trying to get what they need. We're very youth-driven, so we want to make sure that the things that are worked to them and the things that we're, help, you know, trying to bring around for everybody. Thanks to the drop-in center. Uh, we have a youth development cafe where youth can do internships to help get some honor resume. So where we have 40 kids right now who are trying to get a job. And they're just, you know, they go on Indeed and, you know, like, 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 they send them out. But with our internship, we're able to kind of, they go, the youth go through an interview process and an application and uh, they go through food handlers cards, which we get them real life skills that they can go put down and be like, hey, I did this for like 30 hours in the kitchen, learned how to be able to make some food, talk to people, interact, um, so we can give them that skill and then we can vouch for them. If, if we get a phone call, we have had some youth that have gotten jobs locally afterwards that were with us. And all we have to do is pay the $10, you know, charge for the food handler's card and and, and help coach them up as well. Uh, I'm sure, can you send the slides if anybody's curious to look at more of these? Only mind if you guys have time, any questions as well? You, are you guys going upstairs to the commission, the planning commission? Okay. I know there was a vote tonight. Um, a couple of things to note, we do have a stage room where we've been having like music elements to it, so we have guitars, uh, a drum kit, keyboard, different things, and we've been able to basically create community around music. So we have a couple of staff who have been ready to get into bands, into music. And so based on what come up and plays their violin while youth is playing guitar or drums, it's kind of getting them together. Kind of just letting that creativity shoot a little bit. Because a lot of the youth that we do get aren't your athletes. They're the youth who, you know, maybe a little bit more creative or artistic. And, but we do have some athletes as well. But we have a wide variety of youth that come through our doors, it's not just one kind. Uh, but that's really, really cool thing. We have a little computer lab. Uh, but that's really, really cool thing. We have a little computer lab and be able to, uh, do homework. Uh, use Adobe Suite to kind of have some of those creative skills that they might not have access to other places. In the game room, because gotta have games with teens. Uh, this number was just on the slides before, it says we have. Each drop-in center has the average number of uneducated youth served through the, through the year. I know last quarter for us, so April, May, June, we had a hundred and fifteen different youths come through our doors. Uh, and. That was just that quarter. And we've never really checked for the whole year, how many different youths we have. Uh, we can use a software system for that, but, uh. We do have a pretty good reach of youth who come through our doors in, in the Milwaukee area. And probably the best thing about it all is our program is free. You don't have to have HP. You just have to be a youth, uh, with, you know, a clean record. We do try to make sure that either we're coming inside our drop-in center, uh, are. You know, little citizens, um, and just make sure that everybody stays safe with that. One youth who I did ask last week, uh, let them know I was coming here to talk to you guys, this is the Clackamas Drop is a place where I can get away from home. And be with people that make me feel happy and safe. And we pride ourselves on that. That's me. We're right down the street, and I will leave it on this if you guys have any questions.
Well, sit. Not a question, but just a comment. That's, uh, that's such a needed service that you guys provide. It's incredible. Seeing that many kids too, that's, that's a big deal, right? So, because I really appreciate it. I don't. I think a lot of them too, I'm just in Milwaukee, like you said, you can get to all of it pretty quick. Advocate of that.
Sure.
Continue that, so that more youth feel safe coming there and have somewhere to go. Milwaukee, this is the space. I really appreciate this one.
Yeah, thank you. I do feel I have the best job in the planet, right? We have to be with, with young people and help them figure out. The stuff that they have going on in their life. And with, like, we're trained, um, it's state training. We run it as Youth Era. It's called Peer Plus. They have, uh, eight-day training. Where we really get any motivational interviewing, because we want to be able to pull things out of you. So, some questions, not just being like, you know, how are you? Good. How are you? You know, that kind of stuff. We try to pull more out of like, our journey, you know, into playing football or whatever. And we'll ask secondary questions, like asking things around that. So, we try to check with youth at least fifteen minutes a day when they come in. Um, in that three hours that we have with them.
So that's, you're open for them three to six?
Three to six P M, Monday through Friday, school year, summertime, unless it's like a holiday, it's fourth of July, we're closed then, but. And then if it's like a nasty ice storm outside, I get to walk down from home and put a sign up that says we're closed. But. Uh, yeah, we're open as much as we can. We try not to close because like that, the, it said, you know, it's a place where they feel safe and happy. And supportive. Like, I really wanted to like to hear that support word, but I know the youth we work with feel that way.
Zach, I, I, I didn't really know that you had this, uh, the depth of services and things going on behind those doors, so I'm impressed.
How's it getting paid for?
Cool, great question. We're funded through Clackamas County, so Elise Thompson and, I don't know the exact, uh. Group that she's living through behavioral health, but they fund our program. I know. We're also funded a little bit through Measure One Ten, in the sense that we have some, we have two staff who are more on the recovery side, so if you are addicted to things. We do run support groups every Thursday night from at six to seven o'clock, uh, where they can come in. And it's not a twelve-step system, it's more of like, what does recovery mean to you? Okay, let's go, let's do that. And so there's opportunity to. You know, meet with somebody who's been addicted to substances and then be able to find a path for them to kind of get success. That's the hope of these. So we have, we're county-funded, but then a little bit through the state development at one time.
And this is something seem pretty, I mean, I know you've been there a year and a half, I guess. Does it seem pretty steady, or is it something you're worried about, or the people at the head office are worried about every year?
I know we used to have more staff. Uh, Saji is, so my, Lindsey's the one drop-in center staff, so they're there all the time. Uh, as well as I, I'm there. More than ten to six-thirty every day, but, uh, Saji is on outreach, so he kind of goes out into the community. He, like, he's down at New Urban High School, he's, uh, makes connections to Putnam and Cambridge. And trying to get further out as well, because I know there's youth out there who would also have to ask support. And we're grateful to have this space, but the county's massive. So trying to get him, his thing's outreach, he's trying to get out there, but he's also the drop a whole lot. And then, but we used to have other roles, other positions that we had funding for at one time, that's kind of gone away. I'd love to have one more, at least one more staff, uh, but we don't right now.
Other questions? Yeah, I definitely encourage people to go check it out. It's, it's a great space and, um. I mean, like, he's, I mean, you kind of got the sense of it from his, his slide about the different areas of different amusement, but. Theater, game, and, you know, sort of little things for everyone.
It looks pretty blah from the outside. We're trying to find some ways to kind of brighten it up a little bit, still create some privacy, because from that three to six P M. We really want to make sure that it's youth-friendly abilities. We have parents who'll try to come in, you know.
Dr. Williams, those grants, as I know, those grants.
I will look into that.
You are.
Okay.
So please suggest that.
Okay. Yeah, perhaps it's through our N D A, so I will, I'll look into that. Thank you.
I've been part of my Clackamas.
Not that I have some thought with it.
Not from you.
Okay.
Part of what? First Clackamas project. It's a really good, everything we need really, it's a good group of service providers, but when I was listening to you talk about the. Um, like doing outreach in other areas that we can, like Ant Farm, Estacada, Sandy, I've heard of that group.
Yeah.
A lot of different service providers kind of pop up and they come together, they're really share updates and stuff, so it seems like.
Cool, I will say that we are part of the coalitions, uh, Save Kids Coalition, who was Children's Center, a different division of them, but we're part of that. The Youth Service Provider Network, Y S P N, and then the Clackamas Housing Authority. So we're kind of like. Trying to get that with everybody, but yeah, I have some stuff and so, sounds great.
Also, do you have a question? Then when you provide youth housing, is it, uh, is it like hotel vouchers?
So from time to time, uh, we have the ability, we really try to work with Carlos and the, have the Clackamas Housing Authority to get on that shot list. But if a youth is like, if they're feeling unsafe or like, this is our situation where we can pay for.
Oh, with full price.
Yeah.
It seems like it would be helpful for CHOD to have some youth vouchers that are just set aside that you guys have access to, you know, all the time. Not, not that, I mean, you could fill out the CHOD information, but, uh, in a situation where young persons coming to you and they're asking for help. Like they need it immediately, and they need that to be a successful connection.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, to then have to like go through a whole system sometimes means that they're not going to ask next time.
Yeah, and we've had youth who have been on that Clackamas Housing Authority list for like a year, a year living on the street as a teenager. And just like, and I don't know when they called, it's the point of like, but it still takes like three months, sometimes four months to get a space. And there are some places that we've been able to find success with, like, convenient support, but it hasn't been all the time.
Seems like, um, you know, there's, um. Some supportive housing services funds that cities have been able to apply for grants, um, through, and we have put in a few of them. Uh, over the last year, but it seems like that might be a good opportunity to maybe consider another one through Milwaukee to carve out some. Hotel vouchers that are for, you know, people that come to the drop-in. So then that way you are responsible for administering them.
Sure.
And it's just an amount that, you know, you partner with a safe hotel that's in the area.
That'd be amazing. We're, we're always, we don't get those all the time, but, you know, we've had youth that come off the, the. The houseless circuit up in Mollone County, rural area, they come down here and kind of get away from things. That's not that, we don't see that many youths come do that, but, you know. But coming small, we can see it in there.
Are you connected with the homeless youth system up in Mollone County? Like, if you have young people coming in from Mollone County. You should be able to tap into some of those resources.
Welcome to that some more. Being to work Clackamas County, we don't really think to like consider some of those options a whole lot, but. We are trying to like make those like personal connections as much as we can, because if we can tell you, hey. I've been to this space, I know somebody there, and this is what you're experiencing, like, we go in there, I'll need going with you. Uh, that's what's more impactful, so we'll, we'll check it out.
We might even be, uh, why, by word, full disclosure, we're from Mollone County, and, um, like, helping carve out. Specific services that are available for youth and that are responsive to the timeframe that it's that you need to have. It's a huge priority. So if there were some youth that were part of the drop-in on a regular basis that would want to maybe like take. A trip and tour a couple of places to like vouch for them, you know, to be able to say, hey, you, look at, um. Where you would stay and talk about the certain types of programming and things like that, then they would kind of interview the location and see if it was suitable.
Yeah.
And then, and then, you know, even if it's just like a little, or something that was produced by people at. I, I got that way. But sometimes it's like a little bit more informative.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks for coming in today. I appreciate all you, what you guys do and the ability, um, like, you know, about our program.
Yeah.
And we have extras up here.
Okay. We have, we have lots of those, but I'll figure out.
We don't need them.
Take some stickers.
Yeah, so we have two, we have two little stickers. Um. We got a student sticker, and we also have one that says, healing isn't linear.
I like that.
So, anyways, take what you guys like. Thank you very much. You all need to go home soon?
We have forty-five minutes more.
Okay.
Wait, there's a really important debate. There is a debate. Hundred and fifty ago.
I got a quick shout out with you guys.
Oh, yeah.
I remember my boss when I was here and goes.
Should be just a crowd.
Oh, it's fine. Oh, whatever, like, but can I go this long? I hope I have all you. Thank you.
They said nothing, it's like, Erwin.
No, you, you don't. I do want to say last thing, it's very cool to see you guys buy those on the city council stuff. Uh, it's always just nice to know what people are up to and. I remember you were in the like, you played football, you were a co-mission. You were in the Navy and moved all around. A good call settling down here. It's a beautiful place. And last thing, like, we've lived in Hawaii for twelve years, we're being a community, a brewery, all the things, and we really love this city. And we're on one anyway.
Oh.
Yeah.
You should go left.
Oh, yeah, you should have to go.
What's that? It's not about me, it's about the organization of the program, but, um, yeah, it's a beautiful place. I'm grateful to be here.
Thanks, Zach. Thank you, Zach.
Yes, the body's gonna blow this out, sorry.
All right. Yes, thank you everyone. I appreciate the time that I have here for this discussion. As you guys know, I'm a ownership and local housing and. We're really in general, the subject of mine and actually all of ours, we're part of all, and the city, so it's been up to that matter for a few years. Uh, and there are some things that, that we've done, uh, that have been really effective. Uh, with the development, the schedule, the code changes, uh, also with, uh, a lot of the cottage master development that's coming online. Uh, we do have about six hundred portable units coming, now all of our ownership, also our rentals. Uh, which leads us into what I see as kind of a next phase piece or a next piece to the puzzle, is now how we. Initiate more order, or increase more ownership opportunities and all. That said, I only have ten lines, uh, because I think most of us know what these, uh, these models are. Uh, but aim for the poor people watching at home, uh, I have that for you and, and also just a little refreshing. Uh, so some statistics, statistics that I, I gathered, uh, these are all from, you know, real estate sites, these are up to date as of July twenty twenty-four. Um, currently the median sales price in Milwaukee has been five hundred, five hundred and twenty thousand, roughly in that range. Uh, fifty-eight point six percent of Milwaukee's on their own, national average sixty-four, or all sixty-five. Sixty-two and a half percent at home sell over their list price, uh, that was a big one. Uh, for example, our neighbor's house recently sold, uh, for five hundred eighty-five thousand. Uh, and it was listed, I believe, for about fifty grand less than him. Uh, Milwaukee's median incomers cannot afford to beat an house price. Our, our average income earners are about seventy-eight thousand. Annually, and with a seventy-eight thousand dollar annual income, you cannot afford anywhere near Milwaukee's median sales prices right now. Uh, currently the average cost of rent in local to rent a home in Milwaukee is about two hundred and six hundred, and the average cost of rent in an apartment is seventeen. So the, the, the point of this again was just to highlight how the average Milwaukeean is, is, is nowhere near the average price of what I'm hearing. So what are some steps that we can take to provide these opportunities for Milwaukee as well? Here's a few of them that, that I was able to gather again, pretty sure we're all familiar with most of these, the down payment assistance programs. Uh, that's, that's something I can even insert at the city level through C T funding, uh, which is, uh, appropriate use of it to build. Uh, there's also organizations that the state provides funding to for, uh, for down payment assistance programs and. Something that we should definitely look into, Community Land Trust, that's, that's popular one, that's a big one, that's, that's had a lot of attention. Land banking, similar to what we did in, you know, Sparrow. And innovative development, that's, you know, tiny homes, starter homes, three D printed houses, stuff. Uh, incentives, I know that we did some work on, on incentives, but, uh, I don't know if we've done enough on ownership incentives. So it's just another thing to look at. And then also just a little nugget I threw in there for people to thought, that's a seed, social housing law. Uh, this picture right here, also, this is an actual development that Dev Northwest, uh, has built in Eugene. This development is a community land trust development, this is currently being sold at two hundred and seventy-six thousand.
So those are, is that three units?
Uh, yeah, these are ten.
That's a three unit, three town.
Can I ask quickly with this? You know more about this distinction than I do. It's community land trust versus land banking. Is it that land banking leads into community land trust, or what is the like distinction?
I do, it's one thing that land banking can lead to, right? Because community land trust is going to be only. Oral action, right? There, there are some other options there. Uh, but land banking is, yeah, so. It kind of, the way I kind of set this up is, our one kind of leads to the next, that leads to the next. So the incentive is tied to the land banking, tied to community land trust, and then the innovative to them. So.
It, it's a little bit, I mean, they're all in one way or another connected.
Would it be accurate to say, Adam, like, land banking would be the acquisition of land?
Yes.
So that we control sort of.
For future development, right? So like, a lot of cities take like the liquid properties, right, or abandoned properties. Purchase those, and they'll hang on to those for either future economic development, future housing development, just, just to have that in. Their inventory for whatever it is that the municipality may need. Yeah. For that community. Uh, and we'll get into the, the definition first. But yes, that, these are ten, those are right now currently in Eugene, uh, two hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Uh, down payment assistance program is pretty self-explanatory. Uh, these are typically for first time, qualifying first-time homeowners. When I say qualifying, it's a different qualifying tier for them based on, uh, a number of factors. Uh, density income ratios, and it's actually, are usually a lot higher. Uh, the credit score can typically be a little bit lower. Uh, again, can be an investment property, and these are funds that, that assist in covering the, the down payment on, on home. Now. I've been having conversations with local lenders, uh, and escrow companies and real estate agents, one of them being the Movement Mortgage. Uh, and one of the things that we discussed is. Uh, and one of the things that we discussed is potentially using uh, the down payment funds to also cover other funds, whether that be the closing costs, interest rate buy downs since the interest rates are so high. Uh, currently, they are on their way down, but not looking near to what they were prior. Uh, and earnest one, um, for example, when I, when I got, uh, Gabby and I bought our home, I was lucky, well, lucky, because I had to go to war. But I had the VA loan, uh, and I used the VA loan, and I was walking that VA loan, allowing me to know zero down payment on the property, but I still had to come up with twelve thousand dollars in earnest funds. And I had to borrow that money in order to do that. So being able to provide down payment assistance or grants for the first time homeowners, uh, just by own cusp or made, or those who just had money missed it, um, could be a big, a big deal. Now, the interest rate buy downs are interesting too, because that is something you can do, uh, if you wanted a lower interest rate, you would just have to pay more for them. Uh, and if if that's something where you, you know, the difference between, let's say, six percent, five percent is a big deal. And this would probably more be tailored to maybe people who wouldn't qualify for the properties on land trusts, right? Because those are very specific to qualify. Um, the down payment assistance programs are interest-free, it it gets repaid through uh, the appreciation of the home into either when when it gets, when the home gets refinanced, or when the property is sold. So it does get reimbursed, you do get that money back. At some point, they're going to refinance, uh, the the there's some stipulations to it, talking with Movement Mortgage, um, Paul Gieske to be to be exact, it's also Lotteria. Uh, they they must complete like a buyer education program, some sort of financial toolkit that they get, uh, some certification on on understanding, you know, the finances and owning a home, uh, and there's a risk of qualified organizations that provide that. Uh, in most cases, there is a minimum time limit that they have to be in there, again, like I mentioned, I think some some are five years, some are ten years. Uh, I don't know, Portland offers a down payment assistance program, but I think there's this split, still, not as I can show. Uh, there is a current state program that provides funding to a lot of nonprofits. Uh, I do have a list of that, and I can share that to the council. If if a down payment assistance program, I thought with this was using our C T funds to help with these type of grants, it'd be lower grants, maybe anywhere from five to ten thousand. Um, I have lenders and escrow companies that are willing to match that. So if we were to do a ten thousand dollar grant, we had match from an escrow hand as well as a lender, we're talking about thirty thousand dollars, I could really help the family get into these homes. Uh, also with the F H A loan, you don't have to put twenty percent down, it's three percent down, so it makes it a little bit more flexible and feasible uh, to get into a home without a twenty percent.
One, you mentioned C T funds, and I know we're going to talk more later, so you can say.
Yeah.
Ah, wait, wait, wait. Are all of the C T funds we have as the city accounted for, or is it like our worry funds where there are some dollars that you get to administer?
Uh, Joseph's on the call, so he can answer this. We are going to dive deep into C T, how it's going to be used next time. My initial idea is the the buckets, like the 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 fund is set up to put, to funnel money into to affordable housing or to for economic development expenditure.
Yep.
But the actual programming of those dollars is a decision that council directs, so I don't, it's all been programmed.
Okay.
Joseph, can you fact check the, because we're debating, you know, it's a debate, and I like fact check.
And we don't have, and and at one point, we had three point two of them. In that home.
We allocated two million.
Right, we allocated.
So there's money.
So there's, there's money.
And there's money that's come in since then.
So at least, again, it's all based on developments, that's.
And how much there is, we'll learn from Joseph.
And again, it's, you're not offering it to twenty-one thousand residents, but you're offering it to to a group and and the good, the best part about it is you're 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 partnering with a community lender.
Yeah.
Local lender, who basically is willing to do the screening for us, so they would be like, hey, here's a qualified buyer. And then we would stand it and uh, initiate the the funds, right? What we could also do if that's something the council is is leaning towards, we can also partner with these organizations that have those funds already. And we can uh, provide that as as more accessible resource to Milwaukee's teams, right?
Do you, uh, with the, um, Sparrow and the realtor funds, something like that?
The the down payment assistance, if 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 there's no appetite to use our C T funds from council, then we can always partner with one of these nonprofits that give funding from the state for these assistance programs. And that'll help at least bring awareness to it, and then you can find a way to increase access to Milwaukee's to take advantage of these programs.
So, um, may maybe you'll go into this, but the the match funds that you talked about.
Yeah.
Are those dollar for dollar, or is it matched in terms of a reduced mortgage? Since you have, you know, partners that are in the industry.
I I think it's, we're we're really at the early stages of how it's going, but right now, they're looking at, you know, because they can always remove fees.
Yeah.
They can always reduce the cost, they can always, you know, build it into the into the mortgage where it replaces one thing or the other, so there's a, there's a, it's it's kind of, the way I kind of see it is case by case, let's say if there's a homeowner that's just on the cusp of, just doesn't have enough down payment money, okay, well, then let's just use that for down payment. Let's say one of them is, you know, they have, uh, their debt to income ratio is a little tight, so they're able to cover a, they can pay pay off something and you re-re reimburse that money to go towards a down payment. It's an F H A deal. F H A typically, if you're putting three percent down, you have to have a mortgage insurance. Which is separate from homeowners insurance, that just ensures that the mortgage if it goes under water, it's protected, it gets protected. So usually, that's an additional cost, additional monthly cost, that could be an additional couple hundred dollars a month, so. If that's difference is what they, you know, if that's the difference from qualifying and not qualifying, then those funds could be going to potentially covering the cost of the mortgage insurance period. Exactly, right? So it would more be tailored to what situation buyers in. Uh, as opposed to just flat out, this is what it's worth, if it's opposing costing, earnest money, that's what we think it could be discussed.
And Adam, in your research, have you seen any other cities doing a down payment assistance?
Yeah, Portland does it, Portland does it, uh. And 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 I know there's other cities across the country that do it, it's not, it's not a new thing to turn around, Portland does, but does it, and they often actually offer a pretty large potential down payment too, but I mean, houses are a lot more expensive there, so. Uh, next up is the community land trust, and this is kind of, this is a hot, hot one, um, this is the one that's Dev Northwest had just, is doing, I think, ten homes just outside Milwaukee. Uh, they just did a groundbreaking event a couple months ago. Uh, and those houses will be sold at about two hundred and fifty, which is a lot more affordable and something that the average Milwaukee can actually afford. Uh, the picture on this one here, that is another one in Eugene, that is a single-family home. They are selling, uh, three-bedroom homes, uh, in community land trust in Eugene for two hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, and then they're selling, uh, single-family homes of two-bedroom for two hundred and twenty thousand. So these are extremely, much more affordable than than what we're seeing on on market selling. Uh, how this works is that the land and the home are separate, so the land and the structure are two different, they're not, you don't, you're only selling the structure of building, you're not selling the land. Uh, the landowner typically is a nonprofit, the municipality, uh, but no normally, it's a it's a nonprofit, they hold the land in the trust, it's run, it's staffed by a board, uh, that includes residents, community members, and that helps ensure that it remains affordable throughout, through a longer period of time, uh, it's it's a lease, ninety-nine year lease, okay, it's built into the mortgage, so it's not like a separate cost that anybody has to pay. Uh, they are still able to earn equity, and I think this is the big part, right? Because the point is not to, for these homes, is not to necessarily stay in the front, the point is to to get into a home, build that equity, and as the family grows or as their, as their their situations change, they can want to move up uh, to either bigger property or or one that's more fulfilling to their families. Uh, so it's limited equity, they're not getting any equity on on the on the land again, that's why the, that's why the value of these homes don't increase as rapidly as your, the the homes are typically marketed for. Uh, because again, you're not paying necessarily for the entire estate. This, again, it, that's what allows us to remain focused.
Well, and we have one of these coming in in Milwaukee, we have the Milwaukee Short Sac.
Yeah.
Um, which is a different, you know, it's not Dev Northwest, it's a different, it's the proud ground, but it's the same one.
Yeah, and they 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 work with proud ground as well, uh, Dev Dev Northwest has been typically in Eugene. Uh, they're now starting to fall here, which I think is really awesome. Uh, and yeah, so hopefully, we actually met, May and I met at the Sparrow site, right? Then there's land making, um. This picture, by the way, is what Habitat for Humanity is building, Lake Oswego. These are affordable, uh, townhomes that will be for all ownership, that's the just have name of it, but if they haven't started yet, they haven't developed yet, it's just a rendering, I don't know how much it's going to cost, but knowing how it's at for humanity, uh, it's it's going to be probably, uh, close to what the the figures that we discussed. So land making is this, you know, either us or nonprofits that that purchase land um, specifically for the use of future development, whether it be economic development, whether it be housing development, um, whatever it may be. And it it it's it's kind of the key, really the catalyst to a lot of this. Um, and in in some of the discussions I had with Habitat for Humanity, uh, they're looking at doing some work of this, this is kind of really their model. What they do, in some cases, they they go in with the municipality and purchase these lands. As opposed to just buying it themselves, uh, you know, when when I thought about land making, I thought about potentially with Sparrow, if that's something that we look at, selling into one of these nonprofits and having them do what they do, as opposed to trying to make a team on ourselves, uh.
And do you, has anybody you've talked to? Uh, I mean, I have traditionally thought of land banking as the ci- the cities buying land, but have you talked to nonprofits that actually buy the land and bank it?
Talking, yeah, Habitat, Habitat, and they, when I met with them, they were asking potential open land, that's the vacant land that's available for the body, for them to to develop. A lot of their stuff comes down to really the big incentives. Uh, that's their, that's their biggest thing, it's not so much buying properties, it's just really incentives and what they're allowing. Uh, Lake Oswego provides incentives currently that that we don't, which is why they are able to build this there. And it's that they possibly goes and has for housing.
What kind of incentives?
I think it's that, right? Yeah, it's really helpful. They're like, they're like, you know, helping me move this a lot, I really appreciate it, thank you. Um, innovative development, okay, this is the other side of it, um.
Okay.
Please.
If we're not going straight to incentives, can I ask one more other thing?
Yeah.
Um, with land banking, is this like a one-off thing that cities will do? They find a piece of land, and they find the funds to purchase it? Or is this like something that you have a dedicated revenue stream towards, or like, how does if we say we as a city are land banking, does this mean that we have Joseph constantly scouring for a property to come online that we can buy, is this, that usually it's a one-off opportunity?
You know, usually it's, it's, it's what, when these, when land acquisition, acquisition, acquisition opportunities are available, the city looks into, depending on whether, a lot of them are like to link with properties or, you know, abandoned buildings or things like that, where it's it's a little bit easier for the city it's financially
Yeah.
to purchase things, but I I think it's, there's two approaches you can take, it takes a one-off approach, or you can take a collateral approach.
And with land banking, it's like, how do you find the funds to do ultimately able to purchase of a property? Like, I think we have some large properties near, in Milwaukee or on the boundaries of Milwaukee, that would be expensive to be able to purchase, and I feel just this is really interesting, but I'm also wondering how we can almost prepare ahead of time, is that C T funds, or there are other ways?
I I think, I think C T funds is is one of the things, um, I also think that you know, we're not going to try to buy everything, so land we come across, if it's something that we realize is is financially sustainable for us, then maybe that's what we call in one of our nonprofit departments. And say, hey, if you have a piece of land here, this is this is to fill the bill, what can we do to help you acquire this land? Uh, how do we work with you, you know, maybe we can throw an X amount of money, and if you come up with the rest, maybe we can help with the infrastructure side, and you guys buy the property, so I I think it's, it it really depends on how we want to structure it and how us and the nonprofit that we're working, what what, what gets it built faster, what gets it built more efficiently for them. Uh, and again, it's it's all, I don't, we won't pay top dollar for a piece of land, we don't have the money for it, obviously. But it doesn't mean that we can't potentially get another organization to come in here, look at that same piece of land, and say, this is something.
And I think it's important to think about land banking as a long game.
Yeah.
Like, the, when we talk about Sparrow, the city's owned Sparrow for not quite ten years, probably. Um, the Cocoa Point site was city bought for various reasons at the time that had to yeah, anyway, um, with the widening, with law enforcement and stuff, um. And that was city's owned for eighteen, seventeen or eighteen years, you know, so I mean, it's not
Yeah.
it's not things that typically turn up right away.
And I think it's long both on the post-acquisition paid days, but it's also long on that proactive building up of funds. Like, if you know there's big parcels that we might want to think about.
Yeah.
Strategically, you can start building funds to be prepared to purchase that when an opportunity arises, otherwise, and I'm quoting Joseph, because he's chatting, but otherwise, you're hobbling together funds, sort of, when an opportunity arises, which you can do, but it's just, it's a harder thing with the the tight budget scenario that people don't have.
So would you say then the best way to land banks is to have some clear goals about specific properties or types of properties and build towards that, or I guess the idea of like, how do you land bank well? Are there things?
You try, I think you set parameters of what type of land you're looking for, right? Like, you gotta know what you're looking for, it's not every piece of land is going to be ideal for that type of development, right? So I think you kind of set up parameters and say, okay, here's where we want to stay, use a framework that we want to stay in, in when it comes to the type of land we want to buy. And here's the price range that we're willing to offer, right? Here's the, here's kind of where, based on where it's at, we want to come in at this amount. You know, you can, we we can kind of settle it, right? I think it would be more helpful instead of us trying to agree that we'll maybe talking with these nonprofits or very participating in the land banking process and see, typically, how you see other cities like proactive law, or their, or whatever their guidelines and their their past practices.
And it's just important to remember, we don't have a ton of land, we're pretty burnt out, we have some known parcels. I mean, there's certainly one-off lots here and there, but in terms of larger parcels, with a larger development, you know.
Right, and that's why partnerships are important, because like the scattered sense, right?
You know, know of age and any projects that.
Right. And Habitat's trying to get involved to to develop some of those, and that's, you know, that's in Milwaukee. We should be, I know you're playing a big role in that, but we should be, I think we should have a big role since they're in our state, so I appreciate it. The next one is the innovative development, sorry, I didn't do incentives. But innovative development, that's, that's, you know, these are just some examples, a starter home, this picture of the starter home, and I know Texas, San Antonio is a different market. Uh, but just to give you an idea, uh, that starter home there is, I believe, s- s- six hundred square feet, six or seven hundred square feet. Uh, and that one is good, it's built by Lennar, just a big major developer, they're starting to build a lot more of these homes. Uh, that one is going for in Texas, a hundred and fifty-four thousand. I'm not saying that it would have the same price as Milwaukee, but the gist is, is that, you know, these are more affordable options that we can be bringing, can have in our inventory. Tiny homes, again, I I know that we discussed a little bit about tiny homes, I know it's a little tricky if they're on wheels, so where our code says for that, um, but tiny homes are another good option, or as a, as a way to be a starter home to just get into the real estate market, on on a much, much more cheaper and affordable level. And then the three D printed housing, again, a three D printed housing, I see that being, uh, combined with the community land trust. Uh, that's an even deeper affordable type of construction, as we had that presentation out too long ago, they mentioned that, you know, just structure itself, they can get it down for two bedroom to a hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, so just another, another option to look at. When I talk about innovative development, it's also looking at how do we create incentives surrounding these type of developments to get them built here, is is there any incentives, is there a way to does it just take us as council members to advocate to these organizations and companies that are building these types of homes, or is there a niche that we can provide that that allows them to want to build, uh, more of these type of homes here in Lebon? And then the incentives, uh, this chart here, this is the chart that was put together by our incredible city manager. It's in this sphere, uh, these are, this is from our, my discussion with Habitat for Humanity. These are some of the suggestions that they made, this is where we currently have it, and just some notes that that city manager a senior had had, uh, provided. So there's a whole tea incentive, it's a homebuyer opportunity, limited tax exemption, this is a ten-year tax exemption for income homeowners, so that that way that that may keep it more affordable for the homebuyer, because it's their tax, their tax exemption from the property taxes, it helps keeps it affordable, uh, in that sense, we have not getting stored that, that is the reason why this whole tea is why Lake Oswego has those uh, townhomes being built. They provided those for Habitat, and Habitat's able to take advantage of that, uh, and they're now. They provided those for Habitat and Habitat's able to take advantage of that, and they're now building those. The SCC with waivers, we've already got that on toolkit, I don't know if we've ever, all our SCCs or is it just?
I think it's a case by case thing, again, um Joseph's way to check this, but I think it's, it's, you know, we're really to work with affordable developers to see what might be possible.
Uh innovative construction techniques, we we touched on that a little bit, but it's good to see Habitat suggests the same thing. Uh one of the ways Habitat stays so affordable is the fact that they, a lot of their, part of all their stuff is volunteer built. Uh obviously, they do have contractors and professionals outside, but a lot of the, a lot of that's done by volunteers. And they're able to pretty much put the cabinets and things like that through their Habitat E store. If you guys heard those stores around, it's actually really, really cool. The cabinets, you get all kinds of construction stuff from your home. Uh so that's how they help keep the costs down. Uh planning grants, special twenty forty planning grants. Uh considering it open to to possibilities. As Sabre mentioned, discussing the legislative part, we're not going to be kind of that.
We did have that and that was one of the things on the grants discussion that, yeah, the twenty twenty five grants.
Oh, yeah.
Those ones are moving to be a rolling grant opportunity, I believe in twenty twenty five. So it will be like a one deadline a year, uh which is great news. So our planners are are definitely keeping those on the radar.
And then the OHCS, I work is launching a seventy-five million dollar revolving loan fund for infrastructure. Uh and it involves like the land acquisition. And the reason I bring this up is also because the 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 infrastructure costs. You know, the partnership may may require, may rely on us providing infrastructure. Uh built-in infrastructure while they provide a house, right, to help keep their costs down and allow it to to build as cheap as they do. Uh and that seventy-five million dollar revolving loan fund, I I don't have the details on it yet. And we'll get some more details on that, but I think that's a, this could be huge, especially for infrastructure costs or even for land banking, because it is a challenge for land acquisition. And then the last nugget.
Before you go to that, I just wanted to throw out there, I think from the notes that Councilor Savant George gave us from the C four discussion uh with, I think Shabbold. I do think there are some other pots of state money that are probably coming online. It was hard to keep them all straight, but do you think um OHCS is going to have a lot of various pots of money to administer? Yeah, there will just be others to.
Well, in the draft, for fifteen thirty-seven, there was a hundred million set aside for cities to, for incentives, to, for probably incentives. Uh so that's not on here, but I I don't have the specifics on that yet, but I'm I'm planning on getting more information on that because that's, again, that could be funds we can uh pay for a lot of this stuff without having to pull it out of the folder. Um and then the last C that I'd like to plant is just a social housing model. Uh I took this information off of off from my research. It's from catalyst.org, I did some research on Singapore's housing model, uh because they are a social housing model. Uh as you can see, ninety percent of the residents own their apartments. It's a state, it's very similar to CLT. They have the ninety-nine year leases, it's just the government maintains it. And the people are still able to to purchase the, these apartments or these flats, uh still able to make some equity on it, limited. And still able to to provide low-cost housing. Obviously, after the ninety-nine year lease, they can sell on the private market. Lower income applicants receive housing grants that'll purchase the flats. It's like the down payment assistance for the plane, government plans communities to be self-contained services provided. They have a state renewal strategy, they have an HDB which improves all your housing states, that's circle around redevelopment. So I I put this as as just something to think about. I know when people think about city being a landlord, it's a little bit iffy. Uh however, I I I do look at it as a potential model in the future, something maybe to look further into, uh because it could also be a revenue generator. And it doesn't mean that the city has to act as the landlord. The city can also partner with a nonprofit that can advantage these these homes as well. Uh but it is something that I think could merit some consideration because of the flexibility that it does, it does give us. So yeah, that's just a C, pleasure. Uh and then last is just our thoughts, other models to consider, you know, how do we view homeownership in the property? Do we see us play a role in in helping people become homeowners? Uh do we see, do you see us playing a significant role in that, limited role? Do we want to look into each one of these individually, what's the capacity that we have to do these things? Where do we see we can get the most bang for our buck, so to speak? A lot of these are tied together. But I feel like all of these are pretty low-hanging fruit that 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 should go far too much. Staff time, I'm sure a lot of the incentive stuff, yeah, we went down through staff, logistics stuff, but yeah, just going to some discussion on very, very important basis. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Joseph. I mean, we've got a lot of like, we've got a lot of conversations that went.
Yeah, and I think I do want to be, Councilor, as you said. Thank you. There's some, I want to put this together, it's a place to, to structures and presentations, I appreciate it. Very appreciating, uh meeting you that day on such a notice with Ed O'Sullivan.
Sure. No, I was impressed with them, with us, and they had done their research about the Sparrow a lot. So I think, you know, we will talk about this question when we, when we talk about Sparrow.
Excellent.
Um because I do think we have a question there in terms of the goals that were set by prior council, whether we want to stick with them or want to go to a partnership model. Yeah, so I mean, I think we will have that conversation, using the Sparrow. But looking at your questions more broadly.
I know that was a point, it's not, not just Sparrow aside, that's more of my concern, just overall the bigger picture throughout.
Well, I am a fan, I think with um, you know, I am a fan of trying to increase homeownership. But I do think it's exciting to have our first land trust, or land bank, yeah, land trust. Uh then going in with the, with the short stack development. I also think, you know, instead of all these, you know, large apartment buildings, it'd be nice to see some condos. It'd be nice to have some ownership potential created there. And um I understand, I've had this conversation with a few people, I mean, there's, there's say law issues. I, I think there are some people like that Northwest who are um trying to work on the legislature to make it more more feasible for people to build condos. But yeah, I'm all, I'm all for, I'm very encouraged on ownership.
Well, I I'm a fan of homeownership as well, primarily because when they get a home, they must pay a lot less on their own and parent dream. But I tell you what, you just, you've got to appreciate the ability to to generate generational wealth. And you know, um that's important, but then when I, when I think about it and I go homeownership versus the need for more housing units, just places for people live. And so I asked myself the question, and it's, does the, you know, the merits of homeownership negatively affect the ability just to produce more housing units? I don't know.
What was the question?
Does the idea of homeownership negatively impact the idea of just having more housing units? Which typically translates to the partners.
I saw, um, uh this was years ago now, but Echo Northwest, they they're, they do a lot of work around this issue. A lot of different issues, but um we worked with them to do kind of like a housing forecasting for East Moulton County. And they just, the way that they thought about the, this concept of filtering, you heard about this? So, but I I probably won't even do it justice, but the concept is that you have all different types of housing and all different types of price points. And there are people who are, because of a housing shortage, they're living in housing that is at a lower price point. But those individuals could pay more because they have more of their disposable income available for housing. Uh and so as you add housing at multiple levels of, you know, type and cost. Then you're actually allowing this filtration to happen, so that people are going to move to a different type of housing and then that that house that they were kind of like renting down or, you know, owning. Then that would free up for someone who who is a better fit at that price point. Yeah, so it was a really interesting concept. And again, I'm I'm probably not doing justice to explain it, but uh it was helpful to hear them kind of talk about that conundrum. You know, is it homeownership, is it rental, is it a mix of of everything? How do you have a healthy mix within your city? It was just really fascinating and it's probably all outdated now because it was pre-pandemic.
But I do think the, I mean, that flows into the thing with condos too. I mean, you know, I think it's one thing that you can go condos as a first-time homebuyers option, but I do think there are people who are downsizing and who are, who are a market for condos, who are not going to want to move into a rental situation. They want to own it, they want to have control over the price of it, you know, they've got a capital gain, they want to, you know, take care of it or whatever. Um people who, who I think we would have more people downsizing into them if they had, if we had more ownership potential. Um and creating housing on the market by, you know, moving out of that large house with a large lawn that they don't want to take care of.
Well, filtration can be, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And um do you, could you go back to this first slide? Like, one thing that I'll say that really stuck out to me and that makes me really want to engage in this more. All the way, like even before this, yeah, this. You described to me earlier, like explaining if you assume you had sixty thousand put down, assuming the average home price, you could afford a home, a home app came out at four hundred thousand dollars versus our median sale price is five hundred thousand.
Right.
And that disconnect to me, like, what does that say where our community is going to go in ten years, twenty years? When you have that disconnect and what the average quality is versus what our home prices are? I just see like, I'm really worried by economic displacing that we're going to see in our city and the like, character of the community that we have. And so I like this work, I think we're touching on some really important things. How do we balance all these goals together? What is the important way to like, just address the fact that we're sort of community built out in a way that does not provide the amount of housing that we need? How do we, as a city, be a good part of this work? How do we create the conditions for this? It's not like, I don't see a clear answer. Um and there's a lot of work that I would love to do in Wayne, it's like, if you spend, if you had a million dollars to spend, biggest banker of all, is it to buy a million-dollar property and land bank? Is it to provide a million dollars' worth of um first-time homeownership incentives versus it better to use than some other place? I don't know, and I'd be really curious to see, but I think my biggest takeaway from this presentation is like, how important this work is because of this specific idea that we have in our community, because of our role as a city to act as a good steward or just our local housing market and what we can do there.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that, because I, you know, to touch on that as well, I mean, for example, you're looking at a heavenly place, right, where a two-bedroom is what, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five hundred? You know, heavenly place, if we had some of the mechanisms in place, that could, instead of being out-priced, average Milwaukee apartment, that would have been some of these homeownership properties, right? I think that place goes higher to its intent. Waiver at thirty-two hundred a month for their apartments for two-bedroom, you know, that's excessive, right? That's pretty, you know, instead of, we've had what sixteen hundred units, fifteen hundred units come online over the last few years that are coming online. Majority of our rentals, six hundred are affordable, thousand of them are. It's just a kind of, you know, when we need a, we need a, a, a greater mix. Because right now, the old attitude is to be rent-to-save-to-bought. Now, you're renting and buying, you can't say to rent because that'd cost so much, you can't say to buy, excuse me, because it costs so much. So it's just, you know, I think we've, I think we've got a pretty housing chunk of market rate uh rental units. What's the next step? A lot of these new ones that are being built are way out-priced. Just a rented two-bedroom at seven acres at twenty-one forty-eight, if you're in a position like mine and working, need a two-bedroom, you don't want that to take thirty percent, you need, you got to make forty-five dollars to have it. Right, so I feel like we we have, I think with the market reset, we have sound pretty good. Uh it's analogous to the other side of the world, you're just like how Spanish mentioned. That disparity is really pretty large. And if you're buying a house at seventy-eight thousand and you put a sixty-two thousand dollar down payment, this is twenty percent, that's a four hundred ten thousand dollar mortgage, four hundred nine thousand dollars, three hundred ninety thousand dollars, what you're obsessed about, you can afford, but those don't exist here, right? And or they're very few, too, like I said, it's it's a big one, my neighbor's house, randomly. They're asking for us. You know, average mortgage. So I think this helps us have a healthier mix of that, and it's just like what Councilor Savant would say, it opens that up, right? Now somebody can build an apartment into a home that can now be an apartment for somebody else to be able to.
Well, I mean, I know that we're not making decisions tonight, but it seems like path forward, especially with the timeline for the scattered sites, is to engage in a conversation with the housing authority about the repositioning of those properties. They're fairly large homes, which is an advantage for larger families that we want to, you know, preserve affordability for. However, being a larger home generally comes with a larger lot size. And on some of those locations, especially those that might be somewhat adjacent to each other, we might be looking at a situation where you can just, you know, raise the building and and build density right there on that footprint. And that's assuming that we're able to incentivize an affordable housing developer who wants to partner, you know, in a, in a land banking sort of way, right? Which I think what we've, you know, we've found, but uh Jesse and others with Short Stack, you know, are interested in that. I mean, I think that's an appealing route. And we did a deeper dive on the scattered sites, looked at them individually and figured out the, you know, where the cost benefit is on keeping a single-family house or building density on those sites. And if we'd be able to afford, you know, preserve more affordability or even increase the affordability by doing a land banking model on those properties. You know, and then something like the Hulti program is is potentially an incentive that would be in place for that developer, you know, that we would have the ability. I mean, it's not, um because they're affordable housing through um through the Housing Authority right now, I mean, I don't think that we're getting taxed, you know, off of those, we don't get property taxes on those anyway. So, I mean, it'd be great to bring in more property tax, but those have to maintain their their affordability. So why not just like offer that incentive to the developer?
That's, that's a good point, because I mean, Habitat, Habitat also features that. And then those organizations have their own, find, Habitat can give them a hundred percent.
So, I mean, I guess what I would recommend then is that we have um a work session on those scattered sites specifically and begin to look at an analysis of um what our options would be to get involved in the, in the acquisition of that property. Uh and then at that point, we'd be able to potentially schedule a study session again, right? So we've done a little bit of work and then we step back a bit and have a study session with a a few affordable housing developers or, you know, member, members of the Housing Advisory Board for the Housing Authority, because there's a couple developers on there, Housing Authority could be a part of it, and you bring in like, down. Housing authority could be part of it and you bring in like Dev North West and Habitat, RAB, and, and have a really good, robust conversation about. What the, uh, what, what the revenue actually would look like, you know, to be able to piece something like this together. Because, you know, we're not strapped with cash and proud ground and Dev Northwest and, you know. They're not rolling it and, and affordable housing developers, you know, I mean, they're still developers, but they're doing affordable housing when it passes out, so it must.
And for these, we might not even have the, part of the, the county already owns it.
But they're going to reposition those because what they're doing.
But I think we wanted to pick up a little for C L T. As, as community managers.
Well, I think if someone else manages it, they, they, you know, so they, they want the money from the properties because they're building.
Right.
They, they want that.
More, uh, complex models, like traditional public housing models in Oregon city.
Because they're flexible and priceable.
Let's not get it, let's not get into more detail on that.
Um, I, I really like that and, and thank you for thinking about the kind of the types of sessions. That's super helpful. I also think, I think we should revisit that at the end of our work session next week. When we're talking about both Sparrow and C E T. And one thing we can prepare as staff at a high level here too is. There's, there's going to be some choices to make when you see the amount of C E T funds that are available. So I think there's so many great ideas that have been thrown around that we're not able to pursue all of them. And the second is staff time. So right now we don't have any housing dedicated staff. Uh, so I want to be honest when we talk about some of these really cool ideas, give you an honest picture of what I think that's going to require in terms of staffing capacity. Which I think that can inform your guys' thoughts about, you know, future goal setting and your prioritization. But. I love where this is going. I just wanted to provide, you know, we'll, we'll bring to bear the pieces that I think will help you. Make some choices about where to go next in this space.
I think that's an excellent point and I also want to further underline the fact that like with Sparrow. And although, you know, we, we already own that property and so we are in charge of that timeline.
Yeah.
But with the scattered sites, this is a two year clock that started, you know, three or four months ago, right? So to be able to put all these pieces in place, this is something that we would have to move quickly on. And then we would feasibly need to make a decision about maybe contracting or some additional staff time that can help in this process. If that's the direction that we would want.
That makes sense to me. I would, if you, if somebody has a list of the actual scatter sites, I would love to get that. If you got to send that around to everyone, that would be great. I'd like to have a better sense of.
What is the next shift to, uh? In the city, the surrounding areas, what's?
Yeah. So there's, um, a hundred and forty five sites across the whole county.
Yeah.
Um, there are eighteen that are within the city of Milwaukee and then I would say there's probably another thirty that are in generally our Oklahoma. Yeah. And the, the link that I'll send you is a map of those sites. So it's not a listing, you won't be able to print it out. But you can click onto that map and it shows you the address and it shows you the configuration of that home.
Okay.
So you'll be able to see what the square footage is, you'll be able to zoom into the map and see where the tax lot is. And you can start to think a little bit more about what kind of creative options we might be able to.
Excellent.
Yeah, I appreciate you, you mentioned, you said that you queued us up well for the next one, this discussion. Uh, I think we technically have council reports. Uh, I'm hoping everybody's willing to hold their council reports to next week. And we have a council report that we're making again.
I'll leave report bit, so I'm going to.
Okay, so we do have an exec session, but I, I can make it a five minute exec session. That's the plan.
So after the study session, I had no idea we.
There, I'm sorry, we have also one, super brief.
Oh, just really, really important. I, I, I know that there have been some questions around the, this, the business of Milwaukee. Um, there's been some percolation of this and I just wanted to share that, um. That there's an event that Kelly is putting together with Business of Milwaukee, um, on Friday, November first from four to eight. So just in a timely manner, I wanted to make sure that you could put it on your calendars. And that is, uh, an event called Meet Milwaukee, which would be an opportunity to meet the city council, to meet. Uh, businesses to really kind of just get together and be talking about, um, what the business of, and this is, this is, um. You, you have a look like, you know.
And, 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 and it's true, it's true. Look, I am.
Okay. Um, it's a, it's a business coalition, a business network coalition kind of effort that's, that's starting out.
Okay.
Sort of a business alliance that's, that's emerging.
And it seems like it's focused on information sharing, connecting with resources. Uh, but I think it's a really vibrant piece, especially given the last conversation that we had, actually every conversation that we had. And so I just wanted to share that.
Another time and location one more time.
Uh, Milwaukee Floral, Friday, November first, four to eight P M. Uh, and then while you have your pens out, I also want to make sure that you can pencil in, um, oh, it will be. Open up my calendar real fast. Uh, it is Friday, October fourth. And I think they're planning for about ten A M, but the Club for the Service Center is doing a grand opening of their annex on that day. And, um. Connected to our conversation at the last council report, um, I have asked them if they'd like to make the announcement about. This partnership around, um, housing supports on that day and they're interested in doing that. So that's why I need to make sure that, that you have it on your calendars. If you would like to attend it, if you really want to. Um, so I can follow up via email with more information, but since we have pens to paper, I just wanted to mention those two.
I'm sorry, staying on the business coalition, I'm gonna Friday.
Uh, November, Friday, November first.
November first, okay.
From four to eight. And then the opening of the annex at Club for the Service Center, um, looks like it'll be the fourth, Friday, the fourth of October. And I think they're working for about ten A M.
Thank you for bringing these. This is.
Yes.
A venture that's pretty.
Right. Great. That's we will. Uh, after the study session, council will meet an executive session pursuant to Oregon revised statutes twenty ninety two point six six oh two D. To conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. And I'll take a motion to adjourn the, the panel session.
Okay.
So we've been taken to adjourn. All those who may ever say aye, 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 we are adjourned.